Would my colleagues join us? That was clearly out of order. But Bill, could you pass out that book to my colleagues?
I will, indeed. I would be more than happy to. You can still get a copy of Demeter's Manual.
How's this? Are we good?
Great.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 0662, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2016, filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0662 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0663, message and order for an annual appropriation for the school department for the FY 2016, filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0663 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0664, message and order approving appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPED, liability trust fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0664 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means.
Madam Clerk, could you read the next 0665 through 0680, please? Thank you, Mr. President. I have the privilege and honor today to introduce Sister Mary Adele Robinson. For the past 40 years, Sister Mary Adele has served as a social service worker and educator in, well, just about everywhere, but we've known her for the past 27 years in South Boston. I actually met her 27 years ago as a senior at PCI doing my 150 hours of community service. And I took the assignment at the Laboree Center where I met Sister, where she was just starting. And she's done tremendous work down there on behalf of our youth, on behalf of our seniors, on those that are suffering from substance abuse. And just a little quick background, in 1999, Sister Mary Adele was awarded the Robert Quinn Award over at UMass Boston. In 2008, Sister Mary Adele was awarded the Seeds Planted, Harvest Begun Award by the Notre Dame Montessori School. And then in 2009, she was honored by the Notre Dame Academy Center with the Mary Shaughnessy Inspiration Award. So she's made it her life's mission to help children and to help families in need. We've been the beneficiaries of having Sister Mary Adele assigned to Boston, specifically to the Laboree Center in South Boston, where she does yeoman's work. And we all know her very well from seeing her out and about across the city. Without further ado, to bring greetings and also to give us some words of wisdom and advice and prayer, Sister Mary Adele Robinson.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. I'm very pleased to be here. I just wanted to say, myself representing one aspect of religious life, as well as the not-for-profit world, I think we have a lot in common with each and all of you, and I have great respect for our elected officials. Some of the things we have in common are, night and day, your life's challenge and life's work is to try to bring about good for others. And sometimes that's misunderstood, or sometimes just when you've helped one, somebody else comes along and says you didn't do the best for them, and you're in that challenge. I think you do it because you have a deep, deep belief in the value of each person. So in those shared common things, I want to both express my deep, deep gratitude on the part of all of us that are trying to serve our community in a similar way than you. And I'm sure that from each of your hearts, it springs forward to you to do what you do every day, so thank you. All powerful and all merciful God, we once again remind ourselves of that almost unbelievable reality that you abide lovingly within each of us, and that your spirit of truth and justice is shared among us. All of this to give us the ability to serve your people and create a much more compassionate and just city for all. I ask you, God, to bless each and every one of the Boston City Councilors and all the people and causes that they hold dear. Each counselor has been called by you, dear God, to serve the people of this great city of ours, Boston, Massachusetts. Bless each with wisdom, discernment, clear thinking, truthfulness, compassion, perseverance, and flexibility. All of these gifts given by you that both individually and collectively they may bring about an enriched public good. Dear God, expanding outward from those of us gathered in this room, let us show that we value each and every person living in our city and their right to a safe, meaningful, and engaged life. We acknowledge that we are all different in so many ways, but give us the openness and willingness to let this diversity be the very bridge that bonds us together to work through challenges, to solve problems, to create new ideas and new solutions. We also have much in common. Let us grow each day to use those as building stones and be even better. As people of faith, no matter what faith, may we keep in mind the most vulnerable members of our city. May we demonstrate through our words and actions that we cherish and bring about both practical grassroots changes and structural improvements, so that they also know that they are valued partners in the life of our city. Through the meaningful work of the Boston City Council and all its members, may Boston grow even brighter as the shining city of hope and health and prosperity for all. Loving God, we place ourselves in your hands with confidence this day and each day. Amen.
Thank you, Sister Mary Adele, and Councilor Flaherty will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands upon us, under God, infinite and everlasting.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty, and thank you very much, Sister. Sister Mary Adele, who is a longtime friend of the Lenihan family in South Boston, and also someone who's done extraordinary work. The Catholic Church has made its imprint all over this city and all over this world, but too often the women of the Catholic Church are not recognized appropriately. And the great work, many institutions and hard day-to-day work has been done by the women, and Sister Mary Adele Robinson truly represents that. Thank you. Thank you for being here. At this time, I'd like to invite Councilor Murphy to go up and make a presentation. And before Councilor Murphy does that, I'd like to recognize the Timity School for being here today with Ms. Lisa Bello. Thank you for joining us. Hope you're enjoying your trip to City Hall. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to be back up here. I just wanted to recognize today, April 8th, is George Demeter Day in the city of Boston. And I want to give a little history on who George Demeter was. And chapter 208 of the Acts of 1989 of the Commonwealth has set the second Wednesday in April, April being the month designated as National Parliamentary Month, as George Demeter Day in order of George Demeter. George Demeter's contributions to the parliamentary process and his dedication to the protection of the rights of individuals by ensuring an orderly process by which all organizations and deliberative bodies such as this one can make decisions. Whereas George Demeter was a resident of the city of Boston, a graduate of Boston Latin School, class of 1914, and represented Boston's Back Bay as a member of the Massachusetts General Court. And whereas throughout the United States and across the world, Dr. George Demeter has been highly esteemed for his valuable contributions to a better understanding of parliamentary rules and their application in worldwide deliberative bodies, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council hereby recognizes the achievements of George Demeter in forwarding the study of parliamentary procedure and its democratic ideals, and urges all citizens of Boston to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. And the Boston City Council does hereby declare that Wednesday, April 8th, 2015, be George Demeter Day in the city of Boston. This resolution be signed by the president of the city council, Bill Lenihan, proudly offered by myself, and also attested to by the clerk of the city of Boston, who happens to be a member of the George Demeter Parliamentary Unit, which is here behind me, Councilor Feeny, former Councilor Feeny, Clerk Marion Feeny. I'd like to ask Bill to come forward as the president and say a few words.
I want to thank the city council, Councilman Murphy, and the president for giving us this wonderful citation. There is one thing that is not mentioned in the citation that George Demeter is most known for. He is the one who began the tradition of giving the winner of the Boston Marathon the Greek wreath at the end of the race. So I just wanted to make that point. Again, thank you very much. And if you're interested in the George Demeter Unit, please feel free to get in touch with me. Thank you very much, Councilor.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
I was Bill Gilman. And Bill brought a book here, Demeter's Manual of Parliamentary Law and Procedure. I was going to read some chapters to the president. How to Control Meetings, Mr. President.
You're wrong.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm going to take a picture. And Henry Feeny was here.
Yeah, Henry was.
Oh, did you guys want to stay for a picture? We need a camera. Would my colleagues join us? That was clearly out of order. But Bill, could you pass out that book to my colleagues?
I will. I will, indeed. I would be more than happy to. You can still get a copy of Demeter's Manual.
How's this?
Right.
Thank you again.
Yep, thank you.
If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 0662, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2016 filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0662 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0663, message and order for an annual appropriation for the school department for the FY 2016 filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0663 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0664, message and order approving appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPED, Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk, April 6, 2015.
Docket 0664 will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, could you read the next 0665 through 0680, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0665, message and order authorizing the city to enter into one or more lease purchase or installment sales agreements in FY 2016 in an amount not to exceed $26,900,000 for various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0666, message and order remanding an appropriation order that would raise the amount from $2,020,000 to $3,030,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of various capital projects for the youth budget project administered by the Center for Youth and Families, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0667, message and order for a loan order of $40,525,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment, furnishing, and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvement to public buildings or facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Boston Redevelopment Authority, Environment, Fire, Library, Neighborhood Development, Police, Property and Construction Management, Public Health Commission, and Transportation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0668, message and order for a loan of $5,825,000 in aid of the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation and the Boston Redevelopment Authority, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0669, message and order for a loan of $460,000 in aid of the Boston Redevelopment Authority for defraying such part of the cost of development, renovation, modernization, acquisition, purchase, and certain operations relative to the urban renewal of Charles Town Navy Yacht Project, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0670, message and order for a loan in the amount of $21,555,000 for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computers, hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the development, design, and purchase of computer software incidental to the purchase, installation, of operation, computer hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment for the purpose of various city departments, including the Department of Innovation and Technology and the School Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April of Municipal Outdoor and Recreational Athletic Facilities, including the Acquisition and Development of Land and Reconstruction for Facilities, and/or for Developing Land for Burial Purposes and for Constructing Paths and Avenues Embellishing the Grounds in City-Owned Cemeteries, and/or for the Cost of Engineering or Architectural Services for Plans and Specifications, and/or for Remodeling, Reconstructing, or Making Extraordinary Repairs to Public Buildings owned by the City, including original equipment furnishing, landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repairs, and/or acquiring land or interest therein for any purpose for which the City is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire land or interest therein, not otherwise specifically provided for, and for the Construction of Buildings or for the Addition to the Buildings where such additions increase the floor space of said Buildings, including the Cost of Original Equipment and Furnishing of Said Buildings, or additions for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the Parks and Recreation Department and the School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0674, Message and Order Amenning the Appropriation that would raise the amount from $1,415,000 to $2,125,000 for the Purpose of Planting Shade Trees, Planning, Designing, Acquiring Land for, Constructing and Originally Equipping Structures and Facilities it is Authorized to Construct, and/or for Remodeling, Reconstructing, or Making Major Alterations, Additions, and Repairs to Existing Facilities, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other improvements, site improvements, excuse me, incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the Parks and Recreation Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0675, Message and Order for a Loan in the Amount of $10,100,000 for Police Communication Installations and for the Purpose of Extending and Improving Such Installations, and/or for the Cost of Departmental Equipment, and/or for the Cost of Engineering or Architectural Services for Plans and Specifications, and/or for Remodeling, Reconstructing, or Making Extraordinary Repairs to Public Buildings owned by the City, including original equipment furnishing and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the Police Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0676, Message and Order for a Loan in the Amount of $20,995,000 for the Original Construction of Public Ways or the Extensions or Widening thereof, including land damages and the Cost of Pavement and Sidewalk late at the time of said construction, or for the Construction of Stone, Block, Brick, Cement, Concrete, Bituminous Concrete, Bituminous Macadam, or other Permanent Pavements of Similar Lasting Character, or for the Original Construction, Surfacing, or Resurfacing of Municipally Owned and Operated Off-Street Parking Areas, and/or for Construction of Sidewalks of Bricked Bituminous Concrete, Stone or Concrete Installing Macadam Pavements, or other Road Materials for Resurfacing Municipally Owned and Operated Off-Street Parking Areas with Pavement or Other Road Materials, and/or for the Cost of Engineering or Architectural Services for Plans and Specifications, or for the Traffic Signal or Public Lighting Installations for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the Public Works and Transportation Department, filed in the office of the Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0677, Message and Loan Order in the Amount of $6,510,000 for acquiring land or interest thereof for any Purpose for which the City is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire land or interest therein, not otherwise specifically provided for, and for the Construction of Buildings or for additions to such Buildings where such additions increase the floor space of said Buildings, including the Cost of Original Equipment and Furnishing of Said Buildings, or addition and/or for remodeling, reconstructing, or Making Extraordinary Repairs to Public Buildings owned by the City, including original equipment furnishing and landscape, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for the Cost of Engineering or Architectural Services for Plans and Specifications, and/or for fire alarm or architectural services for plans and specifications for fire alarm of police communication installations for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0678, Message and Loan Order in the Amount of $1,600,000 for the Purpose of Paying Costs of a Feasibility Study and Schematic Design Work Associated with the Renovation of and Addition to the Carter Development Center located at 396 North Hampton Street, Boston, Mass., known as "The Project," including the Payment of All Costs Incidental or Related There To, and for which the City of Boston may be Eligible for a Grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as MSBA, said amount to be expended under the Direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. And if the City is not Eligible for a Grant from the MSBA for this project, said amount may be expanded for such feasibility study, schematic design, including the renovation of and Addition to the Carter Development Center, and Payment of All Costs Incidental or Related There To, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. Docket number 0679, Message and Loan Order for the Amount of $23,430,000 for Construction or Reconstructing Bridges of Stone or of Iron Superstructure, and/or for the Cost of Engineering or Architectural Services for Plans and Specifications for the Purpose of Various City Departments, including the Public Works Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015. And docket number 0680, Message and Loan Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Appropriate the Amount of $6,500,000 from the City's Capital Grant Fund in order to provide funding for street rulebook projects and a new parking meter and management system to be managed by the Boston Transportation Department, known as BTD. The fund shall be credited to the Capital Grant Fund for the Parking Meter Fund, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0665 through 0680 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. And could you also recognize that Counselor Lamatina is present?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Did you catch your breath?
I did. Thank you.
Could you please read docket 0681 through docket 0697?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0681, Message and Order Authorizing the Law Department to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept the fund up to a maximum of $500,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 for the Purposes of Purchasing Goods and Services to pay for repairs to city property from damages caused by third parties. Docket number 0682, Message and Order Authorizing the Mayor's Office of Tourism to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $300,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 for the Purpose of Purchasing Goods and Services to Advance Tourism and Promote Participation in Public Celebrations. Docket number 0683, Message and Order Authorizing the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture to Establish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $300,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 for the Purposes of Purchasing Goods and Services to Support Public Art Throughout the City of Boston. Docket number 0684, Message and Order Authorizing the Inspection Services to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $200,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to reimburse for administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce CBC, Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9b, for costs associated with licensing and registration. Docket number 0685, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Center for Youth and Families to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $750,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate City Hall childcare. Docket number 0686, Message and Order Authorizing the Office of Environmental and Energy Services to Establish in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to purchase offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with the Promotion of Electricity Consumed by the City Annually, thereby greening a greater percentage of City's aggregate electricity load. Docket number 0687, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Public Schools to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $1,800,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support the Maintenance and Repair of BPS Facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor resurfacing, landscaping, and building repairs. Docket number 0688, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Public Schools to Reestablish in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund for the Fiscal Year 2016 to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $1,500,000 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. Docket number 0689, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Public Schools to Establish in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $125,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. Docket number 0690, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Public Schools to Establish in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $400,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to perform energy-saving maintenance and equipment upgrades in school buildings. Docket number 0691, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Fire Department Academy to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support Boston Fire Department's participation in the Detection, Cleanup, and Containment of Hazardous Material Release. Docket number 0692, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Fire Academy to Reestablish, I'm sorry, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support training programs for firefighters for non-City of Boston fire agencies. The academy will charge participating outside agencies tuition for each firefighter, each fighter-fire firefighter to recruit they send to the academy. Docket number 0693, Establish, I'm sorry, Message and Order Establishing the Boston Fire Department Academy to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $25,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support Boston Fire Department personnel participating in the Detection, Cleanup, and Containment costs associated with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 21e, and Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release and Prevention and Response Act. Docket number 0694, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Police Department's Licensing Division to Reestablish in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $350,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 for the Purpose of Purchasing, Leasing, or Renting Space, Materials, and Equipment, and to be Partially or Wholly Used for the Instructional Purposes for New Hackney Carriage Drivers' Applicants and Providing Funds for Other Training Needed Otherwise Budgeted For. Docket number 0695, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Police Department to Establish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $300,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department's Fitness Center. Docket number 0696, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Police Academy to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $200,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support training programs for officers from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The academy will charge participated outside law enforcement agency tuition for each recruit, police officer, or special police officer they send to the academy. And docket number 0697, Message and Order Authorizing the Boston Police Department's Special Operations Division to Reestablish in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to fund fiscal year 2016 to support the K-9 Unit's training programs for officers and police dogs from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operations Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for training with the K-9 Unit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0681 through docket 0697 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0698, Message and Ordinance to Amend City of Boston Code Ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 6.3, The Schedule of Parking Fines for Areas Designated for Street Cleaning, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 6, 2015.
Docket 0698 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Reports of public offices and others, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0699, Notices received from Council of Presley in accordance with the public...
Docket 0699 will be placed on file. Thank you. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0267, The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 4th, 2015. Docket number 0267, Ordinance Amending CBC, Section 6-6.3, Schedule for Parking Fines. Missed report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0267.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance amending CBC, Section 6-6.3, Schedule of Parking Fines. It was first introduced by our colleague, Counselor Zachem, and referred to the Committee on Government Operations on February 4th of 2015. And essentially, this ordinance would increase fines for parking in residential parking spaces without a designated sticker from $40, which is the current fee citywide, to $100 during Fenway Park events due to significant concerns and a volume of, I guess, event goers, people who are going to Sox games and other Fenway-related events, taking very precious residential spots in great numbers. And my colleague, who I will defer to, will go into greater depth in terms of the constituent complaints that he's received. But we had a hearing here on March 2nd. It was very well attended by a supermajority of our colleagues. And we heard from BTD residents, business owners around the Fenway District, as well as representatives from the Red Sox. Testimony demonstrated that the events at Fenway may correlate with the significant uptick in illegal parking, particularly in residential spaces. And event attendees, the risk of getting a $40 ticket was not a deterrent, given that many of the parking opportunities and lots in that area charge actually more than the $40 ticket. than the forty dollar ticket. So there's a price of doing business for these folks to just absorb the forty dollar ticket, and they would park in a very precious and scarce residential spot. So these concerns were clearly addressed during the hearing. And the reason it's coming in the new draft is that we're asking that this be viewed as a pilot program, and we want to put a sunset clause on it December thirty-first of twenty fifteen to examine the impacts and the efforts of our colleague to see if this proposal was fruitful, and also to look at the data in terms of how many tickets were written and how many fines were levied, and also whether or not the residents have seen a difference in their quality of life. So through the chair, Mr. President, I want to defer it to the lead sponsor, Councilor Josh.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Zaken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Councilor Flaherty for his support and work on this through the hearing and quite a process working with the Mayor's Office, the Transportation Department, residents, the Civic Association, and the Red Sox to make sure we craft a pilot program, as Councilor Flaherty said, that would end at the end of this year after the baseball season, to see if there's a measurable impact on, on non-residents' parking in residence spaces. This has been an ongoing issue I've been hearing about for the last year and a half. It's something that I think from our discussions with the Transportation Department, the Mayor's Office, is something that, there's, it's issues across the city, but it's incredibly acute in the Fenway area. We have almost forty thousand people coming in, eighty-one, at least eighty-one games a year, hopefully more when they're in the playoffs, as we're hoping this year. But this is, I think, an important pilot program to see what we can do to address this. And we'll also be working with the Red Sox, reaching out to them and other community leaders to help make sure that the awareness is out there and that this is in place to make sure that our residents, when they come home from a long day at work, or at school, or wherever they are, that they will not find someone from, you know, outside of the city of Boston parking in their space. So certainly, I hope to have passage of this and look forward to implementing this program with the Transportation Department and the Mayor's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zaken. Council of Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket oh two six seven in a new draft. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket oh two six seven has passed in a new draft. Madam Clerk, matter is recently heard for possible action.
Docket number zero two one one, order for hearing to discuss diversity in post-secondary institutions.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Councilor Jackson, on oh two one one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We had two willing presidents who were willing to come in to the City Council and discuss this very important issue. As the Chair of Education, I am bringing in all of the colleges and universities to explore their policies around diversity in higher education. We had a remarkable conversation with Chancellor Keith Motley from UMass Boston, and also President Jackie Jenkins Scott from Wheelock, two of the leading institutions in diversity in their workforce, in every, every place, from the leadership team down to faculty and the folks who work at their school. We explored procurement and measures that they are using to diversify procurement, and also to buy locally, how colleges and universities can actually buy from small businesses and businesses run by people who live in the city of Boston, people of color, as well as women. There's really the mantra of having or being a town that has some of the best college systems means to me not as much if those college systems aren't doing business with people in our community, and if our Boston Public School students don't actually have a pathway into those colleges and universities. So I was very encouraged, one, by the candor, but also, two, that both of these individuals, when sent an invitation, extended the invitation back to us to actually call not lower-level people in their administration, but were willing to come forward as leaders of their institution and connect with the Boston City Council, show us the respect that we deserve, and also show the people in the, of the city of Boston the respect that we deserve. We are going to continue to have these conversations and come up with a report of best practices. And I think we can see several-fold bottom line when we look at opportunities for Boston Public School students to actually enter these colleges and universities for the mentoring and tutorial programs that they provide, but also the actual bottom line that we can see relative to their procurement and how they actually purchase. And so there's a great deal that I believe that we will be able to come, come up with. Pilot is one thing, but if their way of doing business actually includes hiring people, actually hiring businesses and people from the city of Boston, then that several-fold bottom line will be met. And we really look forward to the upcoming round of colleges and universities that move forward. And I think this is something that hospitals and other institutions should look at and how they help the city of Boston. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend the Chair of the Education Committee. I had the opportunity to sit through both of those hearings, and I congratulate the Presidents of Wheelock College and the Chancellor of UMass Boston for being so forthright and advocating for diversity within their institutions and addressing the many other concerns raised by the Chair of the Education Committee. And it was a, really, a welcome breath of fresh air to have these leaders in those various institutions to step forward without any form of coercion from us at all. We did not have to issue a subpoena to get them to participate in a very important series of hearings. So again, I commend the Chair, as well as the two heads of some of our esteemed academic institutions to join us for a very substantive discussion.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Docket oh two one one will remain in the Committee on Education.
Would you like me to read both of these?
Yeah, please.
Docket number zero one seven one, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Auditing Department regarding the city of Boston's fiscal year twenty fourteen comprehensive annual financial report. And docket number zero one nine nine, order for hearing to review the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget.
Councilor Yancey.
Very briefly, Mr. President, as you know, last week, we did issue a series of seventeen F orders which have yet to be received. There were three hearings that was conducted by the Post Audit and Oversight Committee where the administration was essentially a no-show. That was the Fire Department, Police Department, and, I believe, Public Works. I decided, Mr. President, to postpone the two hearings which were scheduled for this week in an effort to sit down with the administration to see how we can have a higher level of participation and cooperation, enthusiastic cooperation. So as an olive leaf, I decided to postpone the hearings for this particular week. But it is my intention as Chair to review all of city government in every department. Because what I found so far in terms of studying the results of post-audit hearings for fiscal year thirteen and fourteen is that generally, there's great variation between what the administration submits to us in terms of projected revenue and projected expenditure and the actual. And it's incumbent upon this body to get some very clear answers as to why those variations exist, and most of them are very legitimate. Others raise concerns about projecting out for, in this case, fiscal year two thousand sixteen. So we will continue the process, and hopefully, within another week or so, we'll have a full schedule of upcoming hearings. But I did want to take this opportunity to thank John McDonough, the interim Superintendent of Schools of four departments. He was the only one who actually showed. And I don't think anyone can argue that the other departments had a more onerous responsibility in terms of preparing a budget than the city's largest department. Right now, we're facing a submittal requesting one billion dollars for the school department. Now, if the head of that complex organization can pay this body the respect of showing up for a hearing, certainly, the smaller departments have even less of an excuse. But with all that said, Mr. President, I will work with the administration, because I know the administration wants to be held accountable and wants to be transparent. So I expect that they would respond to each and every seventeen F order, and to work with the Post Audit and Oversight Committee to schedule the follow-up hearings. And unfortunately, some of those are probably going to have to take place during the budget review. So I'd like to request that those two matters be remanded to committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Docket's oh one seven one and oh one nine one will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk.
Docket number zero two one zero, order for hearing to discuss displacement, community stability, and neighborhood preservation.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Housing, Councilor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, we had a very good hearing that focused on more solutions to the problem. It was a second of, it was a second of two hearings where the first one, we talked about issues that we were having. I thought it was a productive conversation, although I didn't, I wasn't able to stay for the public testimony. I believe we want to keep it in committee on the behest of the maker, who I would like to turn it over to now.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Councilor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilor Baker for his leadership in this space. And the second of two very successful hearings, we had over three hundred people here. This is an issue that literally affects every single neighborhood. We had folks from South Boston, Roxbury, Dorchester, East Boston, Jamaica Plain, folks from all around the city, families who can't afford a one-point-five-million-dollar two-bedroom condo, luxury condos, that there's eight thousand of them being built in the city right now. So this begs the question, as we entertain all kinds of international events, what are we doing right now in the city of Boston, right now, for the people in our community? I want to thank Mayor Walsh for the housing plan that looks to get us over seven hundred thousand, and there's a significant number in that plan for affordable housing. How do we define affordable housing, Mr. President? What does it actually mean? And can people in our neighborhoods, in our communities, from Roxbury, the average, the average is thirty-four thousand dollars per person? How do those folks stay in the city of Boston? And what type of city would we be without the folks who keep it together, who made our neighborhoods safer, and who've worked so hard to make us the city that we are today? And so there was, I want to give City Life Vita Urbana a great deal of credit. I want to give the Chinese Progressive Association right to the city, and many of the other organizations who were present. I want to thank the many counselors who came out, and also those who viewed, and I've actually spoken to some of you on the floor about viewing, viewing this as this happened. This is, to me, one of the most critical elements agnostic to whatever part of the city that we actually, we live in of our time. And so there were many things put on the table, just cause eviction, the ability to have to have some type of mediation. This is not someone who's actually, who's actually fallen behind in their rent, but someone who is just simply told that we no longer are going to have you here. Land trusts, how do we streamline the opportunity of putting together land trusts in the city of Boston and then controlling that land? And then in addition, stability zones. Should we have all of these luxury housing, housing units going up in every single part of the city, therefore driving up the market rent and increasing the I D P, which is, we know right now, two hundred thousand dollars a unit that you have to put in the kitty if you don't build it on-site? And, you know, there's not a lot in the city of Boston in today's market that you can actually build for two hundred thousand dollars, and that needs to be updated. So again, Councilor Baker, I want to, I want to thank him for the scheduling, timing, but I also want to thank him for the leadership in this, in this space. I know that in my heart of hearts, every single individual in this room, on this floor, cares about this issue. And we will continue to move and advance policy that actually helps those that may never come into this building and may never get to be part, part of a meeting with this august body, but actually need our help. And I would also, lastly, say, the thing that tugged at my heart are the number of families that are now homeless, based on what's going on. The number of families, and we heard people who are coming from Greenland, Mass., where their shelter is, to bring their kids into school in, in the city of Boston. We have a crisis afoot, and this is something that we need to deal with urgently. We have a great group of people at the table to do it. And this also means people who are in the private sector that need to be part of this. I would ask that this stay in committee and that we continue to move along the way to make sure that we ensure affordable housing for all of the folks, including poor people in the city of Boston. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancey.
I want to thank Councilor Jackson for offering the order, and thank the Chairman of the Housing Committee for the great work that he did in this regard. The only thing I wanted to, to add was the plea from the disability community to be involved in the discussion around homelessness. We worked very hard to accommodate everyone in the city of Boston and to ensure that there's no discrimination, but I think it's also important that we take some very deliberate steps to make sure that we are not neglecting and ignoring a very important segment of the city of Boston. So I want to just add that and thank Councilor Jackson for his great work, and make sure that we are a city that is truly inclusive. And we can never allow any situation to exist where the issue of disability and access to housing and, and other amenities that the rest of us take for granted. So, well, thank you very much, and I look forward to the follow-up hearing.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Docket oh two one oh will remain in the Committee on Housing. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number zero seven zero zero, Councilor Murphy offered the following order for hearing to protect air quality throughout the city of Boston by reducing fuel emissions.
Our Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy on docket oh seven hundred.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing order, this actually ordinance started in two thousand and nine with myself and former Councilor Felix G. Arroyo, not his father. And we made substantial headway under the leadership of Jim Hunt in the Environment Department. And we were working with a community group called ACE, Alternatives for Community in Education, out in Public Square. Councilor Jackson and I visited them in two thousand and eleven. And Jim Hunt got replaced by Brian Swett, and all cooperation stopped on this project. And we now have a new Chief of Energy, Austin Blackman, appointed by a new mayor, Martin Walsh, and the cooperation continues. And the mayor is in support of this draft. It's a first draft that come out of my office. Probably should have Councilor Jackson's name on it since his was on prior parts of this. It has changed some. And it's a good first step, because we're going to be enforcing a reduction in diesel emissions on vehicles that the city of Boston owns, leases, or contracts for on various contracted services. And we all know the Public Health Commission has issued an alarm bell about the rising asthma rate in the neighborhoods of, of all of Boston's neighborhoods. From when they were a few years ago, it's increasing, increasing. And I'm sure that diesel particulates are part of the root cause of that increase in the asthma rates. So I think this ordinance will attack that at its root and make each and every neighborhood of the city of Boston safer for the people who live here. And I think that's part of our, our duty here as members of the City Council. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Jackson, would you like to add your name at this time? Did you, did you want to say something? You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This is a critical issue. Councilor Murphy and I have been advancing this, the run game down the field, not the pass game, down, down the pass game down, down the field. But Roxbury has six times the asthma rate in the Dudley Square area. Bartlett Yard is gone, but there's a, there's a bus yard, and Counsel Flaherty and I were just having this discussion. The biggest violator of this issue is the buses that the Boston Public School currently uses. And Counselor Baker and I, as actually, as well as Counsel McCarthy, we all have bus yards in our district that, it's diesel, so it has to warm up. Diesel particulate matter actually is spit up in the air. In addition, in Dudley Square, we have 35,000 rides that go through there every single day, therefore adversely affecting the lives of the people in and around our, our community. And we know in the Boston Public Schools, one of the, the highest reasons why, actually, young people get kept back most often because they miss school from asthma. So that, there's something to be said about the fact that the buses that are actually bringing them to school are also making them miss school. There's a, a sad irony in that. So again, this is the right play, right thing to do at, at the right time. And I appreciate the leadership of Counsel Murphy on this issue, to care about the city as a whole, but in particular, those young people who are in, in the areas that these bus yards are in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add Counselor Jackson's name. Please add my name. Please add Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor McCarthy's name, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey's Counselor O'Malley. Oh, and add Counselor Seomo's name too, please. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also ask that my name be added and just briefly want to thank the maker and, and Counsel Jackson for their incredible work in this. This is a huge issue, an important issue, one where Boston really can lead the way. Delighted to see the progress, to hear the support from Mayor Walsh, and look forward to seeing it become a reality. Job well done.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Docket 0700 is assigned to the Committee on Environment and Park. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0701. Counselor Yancey offered the following order for hearing regarding the urgent review of the impacts on Boston neighborhoods during and after the Abbeville slash Casey Overpass Bridge demolition project.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey on docket 0701.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to recognize Counselor O'Malley for the tremendous amount of work and effort he put into this issue over the years. The question of the Casey Overpass is certainly not new in the city of Boston, particularly in the Jamaica Plain community, and there's a tremendous amount of support for raising and demolishing that particular bridge. However, Mr. President, I was asked to attend a meeting last, I believe it was last week, where a great deal of concerns were raised, and ironically, many of the individuals at that meeting were from areas of the city that I happen to, to represent. So a significant number of questions were being raised that I certainly cannot answer. I'm sure they've been answered in the past. One of the concerns has to be, has to do with the activities of our public safety vehicles during the demolition process and perhaps even after. Many of my constituents commonly use the Abbeville to get to and from their medical appointments, for example. Our school buses use parts of that as well, and, and certainly, our public safety, police and fire, as well as EMS utilize this critical artery in the very important part of the city. So this hearing order is just that. It's just calling for the opportunity for the public to, once again, weigh in on this issue. Maybe different neighborhoods who feel directly impacted can weigh in as well and have a better understanding of what the plan is. And if there are indeed any serious environmental health issues relating to the actual demolition process, but the public safety issues and transportation issues of great concern as well. So this is not an order to cease and desist the demolition of the Casey Overpass. Some of us may support that, some of us may oppose it. But the fact of the matter is, a contract has already been let. It's scheduled to be demolished beginning in May, and may last as, as long as two years. The public has a right to know how they're going to function during this period of time. It's very similar to, similar hearing orders I've had in the past, looking at similar projects in, in Matapan and elsewhere. So I ask that this be referred to the appropriate committee for an expeditious hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate the remarks from the, the author of this hearing order. And, you know, just wanted to speak a little bit about it. In this business, in our business, I believe we need to be honest. We need to be honest with ourselves, we need to be honest with each other, and most importantly, we need to be honest with the people for whom we were elected to serve. Whether you think it's a great idea or a terrible idea, the Casey Overpass is coming down. Whether you think we ought to do something about it or ought not do something about it, the fact of the matter is this body and this administration, this mayor, cannot do anything about it. And that's not about passing blame or pointing to the state, that's simply accepting the facts as they are. And I worry about setting expectations for people, for some good people who feel very strongly that a bridge should, a new bridge should be there, or the current bridge should be strengthened and kept, to suggest that we can change that because we cannot. I want to talk a little bit about the process, and then I'll get into this specific hearing order. Four and a half years ago, in October of 2010, one month before I was elected, one month before I was seated on this body, it was published in the local newspaper that the Casey Overpass was coming down. Thus began a very spirited debate in my district, which my district is known for, over what should happen next? Should it be a new bridge? Should it be a smaller bridge? Should it be an at-grade or surface road solution? At an early WAG meeting, someone even suggested changing the whole traffic patterns completely. A WAG was formed, a Working Area Group by Bass DOT. I worked then closely with Rep. Liz Malia, the State Representative for the District, to make sure that we were able to diversify not only the, the people and the neighborhoods and the opinions that were there, but to make sure that we had a real robust debate. There were a number of meetings, I think the total is, is more than three dozen. I read somewhere that in the entire process, there have been more meetings, second only to the Big Dig has DOT held the number of meetings. And if you are happy with the results, the at-grade solution, which was the ultimate decision, chances are you are happy with the process. If you are not happy with the result, if you prefer having a bridge there, chances are you do not think the process was adequate or was fair. Now, one thing I've tried to do through this entire process is try to help find consensus, try to work to address many of the concerns that have come up. Early on, there were many people who were pro-at-grade that thought I was too pro-brit. Now, I guess you would, I'm sure the many pro-bridge folks think that I'm too pro-at-grade. But the fact of the matter, what I've tried to do through these last four and a half years is work to address these important concerns. The environmental impact study, Rep. Malia, Congressman Capuano and I sent a letter on that. Worked with different traffic patterns, we've worked with many different local neighborhood associations. I even at my town meeting last year had folks from DOT come to answer additional questions. Now, if the purpose of this hearing is to indeed talk about ways that we can work and we can monitor and we can address the fact that this is going to be a headache, of course I support that. If there are people that I, that, that feel that their voices haven't been heard in the conversation, of course I support that opportunity as well. And that's something that I encourage. But I just want to be crystal clear. We cannot suggest that we can change this, we cannot suggest that we can alter the outcome, that we can delay, that we can push back, that we can get a bridge being built there because to do so, we would be dishonest with ourselves, dishonest with each other, and most importantly, dishonest with the people whom we were elected to represent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Yancey for filing the order, and I also want to thank Counselor O'Malley for his articulate words regarding the process to this point. And I think we're in a balance here, and it isn't our project, as Counselor O'Malley stated, it's a state project. There is no Boston resources going towards it. There were no hearings held in this chamber. There was a state hearing process. I'm not sure that the state hearing process actually heard everybody because the Casey Overpass is bigger than the neighborhood in which it sits. And it impacts everybody in southwest Boston, what happens there, whether it's at-grade or over-grade or whatever, it impacts everyone. It impacts Roselandale, it impacts Hyde Park, it impacts Forest Hills naturally, it impacts West Roxbury, it impacts Dorchester, Matapan, everybody, because that's a commuter choke point. It's also, as Chair of Public Safety, it's Route 203, and it goes into the Jamaica Way. And where does the Jamaica Way end up downtown? At the hospitals. So it's the ambulance route for people going to the hospital from all of the neighborhoods that I just mentioned. So there's a lot at stake here. I agree with Counselor O'Malley to, at the eleventh hour, open up Pandora's Box after the genie has escaped and put the onus on the Boston City Council on an issue it does not control, it does not fund, it has no oversight over, puts us squarely on the firing line for the people that are unhappy. We're going to be here and we're going to wear this thing. I don't see any other way for it to happen because I've been around here too long. And it always happens that way. So I, I don't know what the wisdom is, other than to give people an opportunity to vent about what's happening. We can give them a hearing here and take their vents and their frustrations to the decision-makers that have already made this decision. The horse is out of the barn, the genie's escaped the bottle, it's happening. We shouldn't have to wear it, but we shouldn't preclude offering the venue for a hearing as well. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor McCarthy.
District Five, which I represent, will be negatively impacted. I know I drive by Forest Hills every morning to come into work, and you either have to go very, very early, or you set up your meetings in the neighborhood in the morning so you don't have to go through that chokehold. And it's going to be a tough road. But as Counselor O'Malley stated very eloquently, the bridge is coming down. My job, I feel, as a District Five City Council, to represent my neighborhoods that funnel through this area, is to now hold MassDOT's feet to the fire, make sure that their promises are kept, make sure the trees that they promised are planted, make sure that OSHA and EAP, as they, EPA rather, as they take the bridge down, the neighbors are, are safe. And then clearly follow up with our own Boston Transportation Department, make sure that the transportation studies that the MassDOT has put forward are followed to a T, and also make sure that the BRA is very well aware of, of the design and the design review that they've gone through, will hold their feet to the fire, and make this as easy as a transformation as possible for our constituents. But a transformation it, it will be. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Yancey.
Our three colleagues, especially Counselor O'Malley, the, O'Malley, Counselor O'Malley has invested a great deal of time and effort, and I'm aware of it. But I, I stand my ground, quite frankly, on the issue of providing an opportunity for many other communities which may not have been as connected to the series of hearings that have taken place, or may not truly understand what the public safety plan is, what the public health plan is. I assume that there is an environmental plan in place. This hearing, hopefully series of hearings if necessary, will provide the various state agencies and some of the city agencies an opportunity to, to tell the public what their plan is and how they're likely to be impacted. And I don't think that's a small deal. I think it's very important for us to hear from the emergency medical services how they plan to maneuver during the demolition process and after. And let me close by saying, Mr. President, I support the increasing the bike lanes and, and cycle tracks for those of our residents who choose to ride on a bike instead of a vehicle. It's a, it's an environmentally sound practice. You may recall, a few years ago, I held up an investment in the Hubway program because certain neighborhoods were not included in that effort. And this body supported me in that, and as a result, Hubway is, is a little more pervasive and provides that opportunity for other communities. I support the bike lanes throughout Dorchester, Roxbury, Matapan, et cetera. But I also support the public's right to know. And, and the public does need to know what remediation efforts are in place for the demolition of this overpass, which was constructed, you know, presumably to ease traffic flow rather than to add to congestion. So when you take that overpass down and you establish several more traffic stops, that's going to have an impact on people. And the most immediate impact, I believe, will be the flooding of the Jamaica Plain community with, with people who are trying to find whether alternate route may be. And that places a burden on the local community. But Counsel Murphy is also correct that for, for many years and decades, this has been a lifeline for our EMS. So we need to know, and more importantly, the public needs to know, not to raise any unreasonable expectations, but the public needs to know what the plan is. And that simply is what I request. And again, I, I urging an expeditious hearing since the bridge is coming down in a little, little more than a month. Thank you. The process begins in a month, but the last...
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Docket 0701 is assigned to the Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure, Planning and Investment. Counselor Murphy?
Mr. President, I'd like to move reconsideration on docket 0700.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Counselor Murphy?
It says order for hearing, but it's an ordinance, Mr. President.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so docket, oh, docket 0700 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Counselor Murphy. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0702. Counsel Linnahan...
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0702. All o's in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0702 has passed. Late files, Madam Clerk.
In the City Council...
There are three late file matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the first matter.
In the City Council, Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Jackson...
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late file matter. All favor, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the first late file matter has passed.
Docket, in the City Council, Counsel Bill Linnahan for Counselor Jackson...
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the second late file matter has passed.
From the Office of Counselor Ayanna Presley, City Councilor-at-Lodge, April 8, 2015. Dear Madam Clerk, due to a death in the family, I will not be present at the regular meeting in the City Council on Wednesday, April 8, 2015. Sincerely, Ayanna Presley.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please place that on file. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets, please do so at this time. Seeing no green lights, no green sheets. There are three late file matters which in absence of objection will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added, the Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Seomo, Mary Ann Bligh. For Counselor Flaherty, Ray Mangi... For councillor Flaherty, Ray Mangiello. For councillor Lamatina, John Principi. And William W. Killoran. For the chair, Ana Rivera and Anna Sullivan. For the chair and councillor Flaherty, Michael J. Burke, Catherine L. O'Donnell, Elizabeth A. Schoenberg, and Mary T. Carey, Scary, excuse me, Mary T. Scary. For councillor Yancey, Bruce Bowling, Sarah Brady, Alfred Brothers, Richard Long, Robert Brian Mullin. And for the councillor as a whole, Catherine Rita Finn, Commissioner Joe's Finn's mom. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, April 15, at noon. All those in favor say aye for adjournment. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is so adjourned. Thank you all.